Livestream on meeting. Meeting is now livestream.
On YouTube.
We got it.
Yep.
I'm sorry, yeah, I had myself muted. Yes, it is recording and I'm going to continue working on the livestream if you want to start.
It says that it's live streaming now.
Oh, it is? Oh, yeah, it says live on YouTube. I see it.
Okay, we can start.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April Hoboken Board of Education meeting. As you can see, we're operating a little bit differently tonight with our first virtual meeting. And while we aren't physically together, our hearts remain committed and dedicated to the students and the staff of the Hoboken Public School District. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Public public meetings are supposed to be local cases on April 4th, 2026. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that the meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV, Channel 77, and files Channel 46. The full meeting recorder will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public school and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take the main roll call, please.
Ms. Catamatory.
Here.
Ms. Delara.
Here.
Ms. Delator.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffell.
Here.
Ms. McGurk.
Yeah.
Ms. Simon.
Yeah.
Mr. Kieran.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, first, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Johnson for her superintendent's report, which will be followed by our student recognitions. Dr. Johnson?
Okay, so this evening, we are going to be recognizing our March Students of the Month. Although this is certainly not our traditional Board of Education meeting, we certainly cannot let the accomplishments of our students go by the wayside. And we wanted to make sure that we were able to actually recognize them this evening. So at this time, I'm going to ask the principal of the Joseph F. Grant Elementary Schools to announce his Student of the Month and say a few words. He will then introduce the principal of Connors. Connors will then introduce Wallace, and so on and so forth. When Student of the Month recognitions are done, I will complete my superintendent's report. So at this time, Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson, and I am very excited to be here tonight to congratulate Emma D'Souza as our March 2020 Student of the Month. Emma is, she was nominated by her kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Dunn. And I have to say that as we've all made this adjustment to remote learning and this new kind of platform and this new normal for now, Emma and her family have really doubled down and pushed their chips to the center of the table and have embraced it wholeheartedly. When we had our Spirit Week, she sent pictures almost every day. Mrs. Dunn continues to say that she gets her work done every single day and does it to the best of her ability. She's always great at submitting it on time. She's always really active in their Zoom sessions, and I had a chance to sit in on one of those sessions this morning and see her in action. So Emma is just a very bright shining example of what it means to go with the flow and adjust to new surroundings. And we congratulate her for that. And I know that, Ms., if Emma, if you're off mute right now, I know Mrs. Angley is going to be happy about this one. If I say "we are," what do you say?
"Penthouse."
There you go. Thank you.
Congratulations, Emma.
Congratulations, Emma, and we are incredibly proud of you. And at this time, I am going to toss it over to Mrs. Juliana Addy, the principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School.
Hello. I'm so happy to be here tonight to congratulate Jaleel Sorano. Congratulations, Jaleel. We are so, so proud of you. Jaleel is a second grade student in Ms. Lason's class. Jaleel consistently shows progress academically. He is such a responsible member of Ms. Lason's class. Jaleel is so helpful to both his teachers and classmates and sets an example for his peers by participating in class and completing all of his work to the best of his abilities. During this time of remote learning, Jaleel has attended every Zoom session and has been diligent about completing all of his assignments. Jaleel has a strong support system, his mom. And Ms. Lason mentioned that it's worth noting that her support for Jaleel, meaning his mom's support for Jaleel, has and will set him up for further success. I am so proud of you, Jaleel. I know Ms. Lason is so proud of you, Jaleel. And also, she wanted to give a huge shout out to your mom as well. And we all know that for every child that grows, you know, there's a strong parent support system behind that, supporting that growth and planting those seeds. And we want to give a huge shout out to you also. So huge congratulations, Jaleel. We are super, super proud of you, and you deserve this.
Thank you.
So Ms. Addy, can you introduce the next principal?
Oh, sorry. I am now going to introduce Mr. Martin Shannon, the principal of Wallace Elementary School.
Thank you, Principal Addy. Tonight, we're here to celebrate Nora Matolo, our March 2020 Student of the Month. Nora, she's an exceptional student, hardworking and super creative. She sees the fun in all of her work. When Nora grows up, she wants to be a doctor because they help people. With that alone, Nora embodies everything that Wallace Elementary School represents, everything that the city of Hoboken represents. And she's the ideal candidate for this honor. We're all very proud of you, Nora. Congratulations on this recognition. It is well deserved. Shout out, Nora.
Thank you.
Great job, Nora. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Mara, the principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. So for Hoboken Middle School, for March, we have Jason Jones from the sixth grade as our amazing Student of the Month. Jason was nominated by Ms. Bagnoli, who Jason actually nominated Ms. Bagnoli for our Teacher Thank You Day. But they didn't know the other one was nominating each other, so it was kind of amazing that they both picked each other out of the group. Jason was super active in our Week of Gratitude and our Virtual Spirit Week. He's actually the beginning of quite a bunch of, quite a few of our slideshows. So I appreciate his enthusiasm and his participation and his amazing contributions to our school community because his personality, even though it's remotely and from home, is totally shining through and making a lot of people smile when they see what he's sharing with us. He also is like a hidden YouTuber and artist. He does some interesting videos that Mom shared with me. He also is pretty active every day with the seven o'clock clap-on that Hoboken is doing for the first responders. So, you know, he's really invested in what's going on around him. So we're very proud of you, Jason. Congratulations.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And now I'll introduce Ms. Picapeatro, the principal of Hoboken High School.
Hi, everyone. So I'd like to introduce Davion Delgado. Davion Delgado is our Hoboken High School Student of the Month. Yay, Davion. So, listen, I don't know Davion that well. I know him because he's in school. But every day at 7:30, when I come to the second-floor landing, Davion is sitting at the first table, eating a bagel with his phone plugged in, listening to music and studying. So I look so forward, Davion, to walking up those stairs and seeing you at that first table. I can't tell you how much I miss it. But Ms. Tank is the person who nominated you. And of course, she had nothing but "hi." She was raving about Davion. She said he's hardworking, who is always on time with his work and submits work of amazing quality. He has emerged as a leader this year. Whether it's during discussions or in competitions, he provides examples for all students to ask hard questions, to challenge themselves, and to do so respectfully, to agree to disagree respectfully. He has a keen sense of understanding when it comes to issues of social justice and a good heart to go with it, which is really important. He's a devoted member of our debate team, whether it's fundraising, working late on the mock trials, preparing for competition. He demonstrates his commitment to his teammates and his team, which is really, really respected by his advisors. He accepts challenges with courage and determination and which I think is important. He's always able to reflect and grow, which is really nice when you see that. In addition to debate, Mr. Munoz, he is part of Mr. Munoz's Emergency Response Medical Response Team. He's actively involved in the math club and the bowling team, all while carrying a full AP course load. He is a fine example of a red wing and what every person aspires to have every student be in your school. Congratulations, Davion. Be safe and be well.
Thank you, Mrs. Bay.
Wow, my pleasure, sweetheart. I hope you're still eating bagels at 7:30. Be well, honey.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, everyone, for participating and zooming in with us. Congratulations to all of our students and keep up the great work. And hopefully, you'll all be back together again soon and stay healthy. We are going to move into the business portion of our meeting now, and everyone is welcome to stay on and join us. But if you want to drop off, that's okay, too. So, you know, do whatever you'd like. But moving into our reports, Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
No, it's all included in the agenda.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to curriculum. Ms. McGurk?
Good evening. The curriculum committee met on Wednesday, April 1st. In attendance were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, Ms. Angley, Ms. Catamatory, and Ms. Connor, and myself. There are no agenda items requiring approval this month, and the committee discussed the remote learning plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Catamatory.
Good evening. The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, April 1st. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Simons, and myself. There is only, we discussed a few things, including one agenda item which the committee recommends for approval.
Okay, great. Thank you. Finance, Ms. Connor.
Yes, the Finance Committee met on Thursday, April 2nd at 4:00 PM. In attendance were Ms. Good, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Angley, Mr. Kieran, and Mr. Delator, and myself. The committee reviewed and discussed all agenda items and recommends all for Board of Approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Governance, Mr. Delator.
Hi, everyone. The committee met on Thursday, April 2nd. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Delara, Mr. Kieran, Mr. Cluffell, and myself. The committee recommends all agenda items for approval.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Delara for Wellness.
Hi, yes. The committee met on April 1st. In attendance were Ms. Connor, Ms. Angley, Ms. Simons, Dr. Johnson, and myself. There are no items on the agenda for approval, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Do, Dr. Johnson, do you want me to circle back to any reports out of your office?
Yeah, that's okay. There's a couple of updates that I have.
Sure.
That I think are important for the board as well as the community. So with that being said, today, Governor Murphy extended the Public Health Emergency that was declared on March 9th through Executive Order 103 under the Emergency Health Powers Act and declared a public health emergency which would expire after 30 days unless it was renewed. Today, there were a number of executive orders, or in fact, that were passed. And just want to highlight a couple of them that are important to us. In Executive Order 116, both of those, that executive order deals with two issues. One, extending the deadline to certify tax levies to the county board, and the other regarding an April election. So that we're going to push to the side as the April election does not necessarily apply to us. However, in Executive Order 117, he officially waived the 2019-2020 statutory school year assessment requirements for eighth-grade students and 12th-grade students who have not yet met the graduation requirement. The executive order also waived the appeals process, the portfolio appeals process. And the Commissioner of Education today announced that 13,000 students across the state would have been going through that portfolio process but will now no longer be doing so. The order also waived the statutory requirement that the statewide assessment be administered to all eighth graders showing their progress of mastery toward graduation requirements. And additionally, that particular order prohibits the use of student growth data as an evaluation tool for educators and also waives the statutory requirement of three observations and evaluations for non-tenured teaching staff for 2019-2020 school year. The governor also extended the deadline for notifying non-tenured staff about their employment for the following year by three weeks. So as you know, it was a May 15 deadline. It's now moved to June 5. And the deadline for non-tenured teaching staff to accept any such offer of employment will be changed from June 1st to June 22nd. We're in our fourth week, as you know, of our remote learning plans. We are required to continue educating children to the best of our ability during this unique time period. I want to make a couple of things really clear. We're required to develop and submit remote learning plans to both the county office and then the county office to the Department of Education for approval. To some, the plans may seem not rigorous enough. To others, they might seem a little bit too rigorous. And then to others, they're just right. We've also stressed to the principals that if there is any family at all that is having difficulty with keeping up with the work, they can. They can absolutely take time to regroup, take a little time. Most of the assignments are either recorded or posted in Google Classrooms or on Dojo. I think it's also important that everybody knows that we changed the code in Genesis for the remainder of the year from an incomplete to a to be determined. Just kind of giving a more positive approach for families that may feel that they're kind of stressed or having a little anxiety over completing the work. So that just means that when the work is completed, the principals will work with the teachers, particularly during this time, to ensure that we are understanding in terms of the requirements that are being placed upon us. In addition, I do want to talk a little bit about spring break. Once again, it's a little bit of that Goldilocks kind of thing. We have some parents that said we should have no spring break. We have had some community members that say we should have a spring break. And then we've had a couple sprinkled in there that have said, why don't we just do a couple days of a break? It seems as if no matter what decision was made, not everyone would be happy with the decision. So with that being said, we will make sure that on the website, we have a number of resources for families who do want to continue doing structured activities with kids. They just won't be teacher-driven or teacher-led. There'll be links to popular websites or reading websites that the kids could actually do, maybe even some art and creativity-oriented websites during the time that's off if the child and the family feels that they do not need a mental break from the remote learning. There are a couple of other updates on the alerts page on the website. I want to draw your attention to the fact that new kindergarten children that will be enrolling in September that are not a part of our current preschool program, how are we finding out about them? Well, interestingly, right now, we have already enrolled 24 new kindergarten children that we do not know a whole lot about. They're coming from local preschool programs. But we have created a Genesis enrollment platform, and they are actually enrolling online at this time. So we're seeing a growth in not only our current kindergarten to next year's kindergarten in-house, so pre-K 4 to kindergarten, but we're seeing right now almost an additional class section of new students to that number also. We've had some questions about the Kindergarten Day of Visitation. It was actually scheduled for today. I put it out in the Herald, but in addition, I also put it on the alerts page on the homepage of the website that basically just says that obviously, we are not able to host the Kindergarten Day of Visitation in each of the elementary schools on April 7. However, we are in the process of creating a stopgap, digital visitation days, just to be able to provide parents with the opportunity to meet the principal of the building virtually, hear a little bit about the curriculum and the programs and so on and so forth, and even see portions of the school as well. But when we're back up and in action, we will reschedule those those days so that the families can get in. We're also getting a lot of questions from families that want to register for pre-K 3 but don't know what to do because it was originally scheduled as a one-week-long registration process. We have decided to do that digitally as well. But we are not making the link for that registration live until April 20. So the registration was supposed to be from April 20 to April 24. We will keep the link live for that time for just pre-K 3. And today, I've assured a few parents who were very nervous about uploading documents such as physicals that they would not be able to get at this time and explained to them that it's okay. Their application will continue to accrue different documents as we go as a result of this situation. So we are going to be doing that. And lastly, I would like to provide a heartfelt thank you to all of our teachers, administrators, all of you board members, our clerks, our guidance counselors, our custodians, child study team members, food service, everyone who works in the central office for ensuring that we are doing everything we can to continue educating the children of the district. So I thank everybody for that. And then lastly, we received our statistics, our final statistics for the College and University Application Process. However, up until May 1st, we still have some rolling acceptances that will be coming in and the possibility of some deferrals that will be changed to acceptances. But at this time, the class of 2020 has 82 students. They have earned $17.3 million in college and university scholarships. 95% of the class has applied to two- or four-year schools and 95% have been accepted to two- or four-year schools. I'm keeping the list going, and we'll be able to publish that list soon. I also want you to know that we've had some nice accomplishments in terms of our student athletes. Nijon Freeman and Damon Murray both officially committed to Rutgers University in New Brunswick to play football. Jihad McCall has officially committed to Morehead State to play football. Deshaun Pickett committed to Siskiyou to play football. And Ally Mendoza committed to Keystone College to play football. Danny Henson is also set to play soccer at Del Vau. And we have two more student athletes who are baseball players. But obviously, this has been a little bit of a tricky year. So we're waiting to find out where their commitments will be to play baseball next year as well. So I congratulate them. I'm sure you do as well. And at this point, that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thank you. Congratulations to our student athletes and congratulations to the class of 2020 for the incredible stats you just shared with us. I also wanted to extend a sincere thank you to you, Dr. Johnson, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, and your entire administrative team, staff, teachers, staff, custodians, clerks, everybody involved. It's been a very challenging time, and we appreciate all of the hard work and the dedication that you have. You didn't miss a beat with the remote learning plans. They're exceptional. The kids were up and running on day one. And I think it speaks for itself that other school districts throughout the country have asked to access our plans. So congratulations to you. I think that's a big accomplishment. So thank you. Hang in there. Hopefully, we're all back together again soon. And and we'll, you know, we'll go from here. But in addition, I'd like to thank Mr. Munoz and Mr. Cook for getting this meeting off and running. So it's our first virtual meeting. Who knows? We may have to have more, but thank you again. And with that, we will move on to public comments on agenda items.
No one signed up for agenda item comments.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion or items to pull? All right. Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Catamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Delator?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
I have to stand on 10.04, but yes on everything else.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Kieran?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, public comments on agenda and on agenda items.
There's just one speaker, Roseanne Versace.
Okay, Ms. Versace?
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm happy to see everybody there, I should say, instead of here. So that hopefully means that your families are all doing well and you're all doing well. I just want to publicly I just want to publicly commend my fellow teachers and all the staff of the Hoboken Public School District. We've all used the term "uncharted waters" to describe these times, and my colleagues are navigating them with their typical dedication and care for the students. They continue to work each day even when they are dealing with their own challenges, whether it be health or just the day-to-day care of their own children and families. I know many parents have reached out to say how grateful they are for the compassion and love the teachers have shown to them and their children at a time when we are all feeling very vulnerable. Whether in school or at home, our goal as teachers is always the same, to care for the emotional and educational wellbeing of our students from pre-K to grade 12. We may be remote, but our desire to protect and nurture our students is unwavering. We ask for your continued support, and we appreciate your support in this trying time and your understanding. We do the best we can in such uncertain situations. I hope that you all stay well, stay safe, and I look forward to being in person with you at the next meeting. Fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes our meeting. I hope everyone stays healthy and safe. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Right, that concludes our meeting. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.